Let's come to order if we may, and those of you that were fortunate enough to see the sunset as you were coming in the door today. As we take a moment to pause and think about how lucky we are. Whenever you see a sunset like that, you have to realize there's someone bigger, bolder, smarter up there in the skies that made such a beautiful place for us. Let's take just a moment, bow our heads, for time of reflection. Alrighty, thank you very much, and we're officially calling the meeting to order and saying welcome to all of you. And we will go to item number three on our agenda, which is the pledge of allegiance to our flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number four on our agenda is the consideration of approving the agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
May I request a slight change to the agenda?
Sure.
Under number seven, the presentation of Oceanfront Inlets Management Plan, and then followed by discussion and possible action, could I ask that we use this opportunity to hear Fran's presentation and ask questions? And because of the importance of this document and the need to think about the things in it against different stuff, that we push discussion and possible action back till October? So there won't be any discussion and action on the report, but we'll hear Fran and have our chance to ask questions.
So discussion, but just no action?
No, or even discussion, let's just push discussion and action. Hear Fran, ask any questions.
Just discussion?
Well, I'm sorry, yeah, discussion on Fran, but not more discussion.
Yeah, no decision.
Yeah, no action.
No action.
It said possible action, but...
Yeah, just...
You wanted to strike?
Strike the action part, yeah, and move that to October.
I'm okay with that.
You just want to strike that on this agenda, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Everybody understand what we're doing? So under seven, you would have A and only the word discussion.
Right.
Anyone else?
No problem.
That's it for me.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the agenda.
Now, motion to amend the agenda by striking possible action on seven.
Does the motion maker and seconding party agree to the amendment? Okay, if you don't, then we have to make...
Who is the seconding party?
I think John said he approved.
Okay, you approved.
He seconded, yeah.
You made it.
Yeah, yeah.
You approved it, so you're now going to vote on the amended agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. The amended agenda is approved. And we are now on the number five, which is consideration of minutes of August 12 and 20. Is there a motion to approve?
Do you want to discuss after the motion, or to make a change?
Either way you want to do it.
Okay, I'd like to request a change, or consideration of a change in the minutes on page three. At the bottom of that paragraph, it reads, they can, well, he doesn't have a problem with sending this to the LGC and communicating with Rives. They can tell them that Town Manager Hewitt is the only one they report to. He doesn't think there will be a problem with him understanding it. If I said such a thing, it was an error. They report to the board. What I meant to say was that the town manager's the only one who will provide them information with regard to the audit.
Madam Clerk, I need your guidance here. Once said, once in.
I mean, that's what was said, so you can't change what you said. The minutes are what's reflected in the meeting.
Okay, so if I...
So I mean, if I took it down wrong, but I don't think I did, so I was correct, but if I did...
I don't suspect that. I suspect I said it wrong, but...
But I could have, so I mean, you could make a motion that I listened to the minutes and if, like, listen to that part of the tape.
Well, let's assume it's right, so there's no way to change it.
Okay, yes.
It's not true, so you got me for lying.
No, I would suggest, so that you make a statement in this meeting that would be reflected in the minutes.
Okay, I do that.
Okay, and that way you can get it on record of whatever you're trying to do.
Okay. Otherwise, I recommend that we approve both sets of minutes.
Is there a motion, what you just did, and a second?
Second.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if we could, let's speak up louder and speak into the microphone. We're getting signals from the audience. Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve. Is, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say no. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. And now we'll go to number six, public comments on agenda items. Only agenda items at present time. Anyone want to speak to an agenda item? If you do, raise your hand, be recognized, come to the podium, speak into the microphone, give us your name and life history. Aye? No one? Let the record show, we have no public comments, number seven. And remember, we changed that, so... Mr. Hewitt, you wanted to do an opening statement for Mr. Fran Way, or who's going to do that? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. As part of the ordinance 1802, the board directed the inlet and beach protection board to work on a long-term plan for the inlets and beach, and ATM has been facilitating that, working with inlet and beach board for the last few months, and they are here to present their plan this evening.
Can I ask you a question? Probably more geared towards you than Fran.
Sure.
How frequently will this be reviewed and updated?
The board has considered a yearly review. For any changes that need to take place in it, so they're looking at a yearly review of it.
And the IBPB will lead that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and when and how do you see the IBPB plan being better aligned with the GRR, Army Corps of Engineering Long-Term Plan, you know, which is obviously being discussed and considered?
Well, in a couple of meetings ago, well, before the GRR presentation, what the IBPB had said they were going to do in this plan that were in the minutes, is that they were going to really wait till next year to kind of focus in during the review process. But then at this past meeting, they said they wanted to at least put a statement in there, since some things had happened, and there was a letter of intent that went in. So right now, it's going to be minimal content is what's being proposed until we know more, and then more would be added as we got additional information for the yearly review that happens next year.
So we have the yearly review. Okay, just wanted to understand that, thank you.
Members of the board, this is Kathy. No one's met her. She was the facilitator for this, and she kind of ran things. I'm going to actually let her kind of go through the presentation, and then if you have any questions, we can discuss, you know, any manners of beach activity, beach management after that.
So that's code four. I was the writer and policy doer, and Fran's the technical expert. So that was his way of saying it. So thank you very much for having us. We're very happy to be here, and we have just a brief PowerPoint, because we see that you have quite the robust agenda, so we'll go through it fairly quickly, and then we understand that there's questions. So, if I can, oops, operator error. So quickly, we're going to describe the overall planning process, our geographic areas of focus, the goals, the projects and activities that were identified by the board, and discuss the concept and strategies of adaptive management. And before I really get into the planning process, I just, I want to quickly say that in my 20 years working with local governments, that this experience was actually quite refreshing, because the board and the staff have been quite engaged and thoughtful throughout the process, and it's been a pleasure for me to have worked with them in developing this plan. So I don't think we share enough positive feedback, so I wanted to do that, because it's been a real, Fran and I have enjoyed this experience. So with that being said, we kicked off the process in February. We had our initial meeting where we talked about the overall framework, and we began our data collection, and then since then, we've had five different work sessions with the board that's resulted in the plan before you now. And there were four main principles that the board wanted to discuss and gave us direction on. The first one was, they wanted the end product to be goal-based and adaptively managed plan. So that was the overall principle from Chair Myers and the team. And the second principle was for us to build on the 2009 existing beach management plan. So we already had a good base of information, and a primary goal at that point was no net sand loss, and we'll touch upon that goal, too. So that was what was set back in 2009. The third principle was to figure out what our planning horizon was going to be. Most local government plans are a 20-year planning horizon. We settled on 10 years, because the subject matter is the beach, the shoreline, it's continually changing, change seems to be the constant. So we set on 10 years, and we are considering years one through five as short-term, and years six through 10 as long-term. And then the final principle I wanted to touch upon is Chair Myers was very adamant and found it very important that we really have a thorough discussion of funding options. That we have one chapter in the plan set aside just to discuss what options there are at this point in time. And we also identified potential funding options for the projects that are in the plan. So next, we'll talk about the actual geographic area. So within the eight miles of Oceanfront, we delineated six specific areas. From east to west, we have the Lockwood Folly Inlet, the East End, the Central Reach, West End, and Shalote Inlet. So we have those five primary areas, plus, if you look on the figure in yellow, those are sand sources. So what we've already determined as viable sand sources. So we picked these six geographic areas so that we could, what we thought would be best as far as managing and assessing, instead of looking at the entire eight miles.
So, yeah, I can just, really quick, there's obviously the East End and the Central Reach, but the West End is kind of usually unmanaged, because it does, it is naturally accretional. And then you can see that back, you know, 10, 12, 15 years ago, there was several oblooms nourishments, and I'm sure a lot of people remember that. And so some of the sites that were used in the sites of the town owns, the Turkey Trap Road site, which is a good emergency site. And then the Central Reach project was kind of off of Oak Island, near the Lockwood Folly Inlet straight out. And then there's some other areas that we're currently working on, and these are areas that were looked at for sand sources by the Corps 20 years ago, and we're just kind of building on that, and trying to find some more sand offshore.
Okay, next, I just want to touch upon the goals. Within the plan, it's section 1.3, there are now 15 goals that I categorize as quite proactive rather than reactive. Most of the wording associated with the goals are action verbs, such as recognize, promote, increase, create, back to adaptively managing. And within the 15 goals, we do have the one from 2009 for the no net sand loss. And each of the goals, as outlined on this slide, addresses coastal erosion, the changing in the sea level, resiliency, and then impacts from our recent hurricanes. And section 2.7, we have 19 projects and activities identified within the plan for implementation within the next 10 years, which was our planning horizon. And the projects vary from the Central Reach restoration, to sand placement, to sand investigations, additional monitoring, mapping, et cetera. And as you look through the 19 projects, you'll see that most of them are really focused on the first five years, the short-term, to really address the effects of the hurricanes in 2016 and 2018. And finally, our last slide, back to the concept of adaptive management. We have an entire chapter devoted to this. What it means are two things for us. The overall concept is this plan will not be static. We intend jointly with the board and ATM to evaluate it each year, and to make adjustments or recommend adjustments to you as needed. Those adjustments could be based on opportunities that have occurred during the last year, such as funding, could be what we call consequences, such as new regulations or delayed projects. And also, I'm going to take a deep breath, but perhaps another hurricane, hopefully not, I'm glad that Dorian was not as bad as it could have been. From a plan perspective, review it each year, work together on that, give you some suggestions. During the year, during that timeframe, actions and activities that can be undertaken are the continuing monitoring and reporting that we do, ATM does, for the town, on the dune and the beach. And also, take a look at the projects that have occurred, understand why they were successful, why there could have been impediments, what we could do better. So those are our other activities. So with that, I'll leave it to you, and want to thank you again for allowing us to present on the plan.
Commissioners, you got any questions? Staff, questions? You must have done a great job.
Well, no, I know Commissioner Pat's got this question, but I think she's holding it off on the... And a lot of the commissioners were present for a lot of these meetings, and thanks to all the members, and then thanks to the commissioners, I think there was a constant presence with the board. And so I think everyone, you know, over this last six months, the commissioners and the board, obviously, the IBPB, that both the board commissioners and the beach protectors, both, you know, were pretty involved in it, and where we went, we got several drafts, and so I'm sure that everyone's kind of caught up on it. But we're open to questions of discussion. I'm assuming, next board and commissioner meeting, I'll probably be up here to do a, present on the annual monitoring reporting, and so we can also, you know, I'll be available for this as well.
Anybody?
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Mr. Green, I believe you're next. Mr. Clemmons, do you want to say anything? You're good.
Mayor, Commissioners, you have in your agenda package some information pertaining to a state grant program that was initiated back in 2015. It's an asset and inventory assessment grant program. And it was put into place to assist municipalities with indexing and inventory in their existing utility systems. It's all, it's all about good management, it's all about ultimately developing asset management plans that this would be a part of. It is a grant program based on a scoring criteria. It's somewhat subjective as to how those points are applied. We feel like that, that a program like this for coastal communities, in that you're subject to inundation, you're subject to breaches of the, of the, of the dunes, the roadways. What this does, it goes in and prepares a global positioning system of every, every piece of your utility system, from your, from your valve, your hydrants, your meters, your, where you, obviously, your pump stations, your vacuum tanks. You coordinate all of that information with your present database, your billing system. It's just, it's just a cross-reference of everything. If you do have a breach, if you do have a, if you get six inches of sand across the section of your roadway down here, the problem is not fixing the utility, the problem is finding it. And this will, this is, this is GPS accuracy, I mean, it's within an eighth of an inch. You're getting latitude, longitude, and elevation of every one of these features. And it's something that, they fund about 30 of these per cycle, this is, I think, the fifth cycle. Anywhere, they fund anywhere from five to $10 million per cycle. I think the scare that we all had back here a couple of weeks ago is in your favor. I think that's going to be on everybody's mind, and this is what we're going to play to in writing this particular application. I think you have a good chance for it. Depending on the score, the local share could be anywhere from five to 20 percent. The good news there is, is so much of that local share can be in kind. There's certainly going to have to be some participation with staff here to provide records, and certainly going to have to be some participation with public works, it helping us identify and locate these, these features as they're surveyed.
So you're saying it's not a matching, it's a, it is, not a full match? It's not a 50/50?
No, not 50/50. It's anywhere from five to 20.
And part of that match could be the time that somebody...
It could be all, it could be all, it could be all in kind.
Okay.
And we certainly suggest that you make it look like it's in kind.
Sure, sure.
And they'll, they'll, they will determine whether or not that's...
And it is, is it a single system that, is it a system? Or, you know, using GPS? Or is it, we select the system, or inventory computer system, or what's the...
No, it's a, it's a, it's a GPS, a global...
Yeah, but it's, if you have an inventory, it's, there's something to capture all that information. How do you, how do you capture and use that information?
Is it in the cloud, or where's the data captured and kept?
Well, the cloud is, you'll have hard copies of maps, he'll have, he'll have records on his computer. I mean, he'll be able to, anybody, anybody in here can go up and pinpoint it.
So it's, it's from them? It's from, they have, they have this...
Software, huh?
Software?
Oh, yeah. Everything's be compatible with the town software.
Okay. Is inventory included? Would they, is inventory included? Just so you know, that you're doing a, I mean, spare parts?
Not necessarily.
But that's how it can be used, is to ascertain what type of spare parts that you need. In addition to what you have, where it is, how much of it you have, that's, that's, that's how it dovetails into a capital improvement plan.
And that's, that's a good question, and I might have answered it a little quickly. I haven't heard that one before, but it seems like it should be.
Yeah, you think they have the spare parts as part of the inventory?
It should be, yeah.
Okay, good.
I'd like to inject something into this conversation, if I may, Commissioners are allowed. Mr. Clemmons has been here, and some of the rest have been here whenever the streets and the lots were covered with sand on the oceanfront properties. Things from the oceanfront washed across the boulevard into the marsh, so forth. No way in the world, knowing where the lines were, the meter boxes were, nothing. And this is something that I've been supportive of for many years, and Mr. Clemmons has too, and police department, you know, waters gushing out of houses, and all you can see is a sea of white sand up and down the boulevard, so where are the cutoffs and so forth? I mean, I would ask Mr. Clemmons if you would like to address this for a minute, because I know you've been involved for a long time.
I sure will, it's a wonderful thing, you know, from there to that, when you've gone back and playing grass up sand, I don't care how long we've been here, it just completely changes the landscape, where you have no idea where any of that stuff's at. Also, like pulling out, as you have staff turn over stuff, you know, that's records that we don't, that staff not walking out the doorway, you're not relying on somebody to remember, I mean, it gives us a good file for the future, and it's a much-needed piece that we need for the future as we, we need it bad. So if you're careful, you have the lumber and sand that you have, I've had that happen before, but when it happened before, we hadn't had it before, so now it'd be worse, so we repeat and all those other things, and I think if Mr. Fran could go after a minute of you, that, I am, I think that's what we need to do.
Yeah, you don't even know where the street is, you don't know where the fire hydrant is, and this stuff's covered up. So, anyway, I'm not supposed to talk.
Let me ask a question along that line. It would be nice if we had some pictures of those, of those conditions from, from the past, to include in this application, to make our point even stronger, if you could help us with that.
We can probably come up with some.
Yeah, we'll probably find some.
Do we have an estimate on what the cost of this?
Application due the end of this month, and typically, they announce the recipients sometime in, early next year.
You remember I'm saying, the cost of implementing this, this type of a system? Do we have an estimate on what the cost would be?
Thank you, Clark.
The cost to the town for this system, have a range, a cost range? If the town chose to participate, what kind of money is the town talking about?
Well, what are you, you're going after $150,000 for the sewer, $150,000 for the water. It could be anywhere from $7,500 each to $30,000, somewhere in that range. Anywhere from 5 percent of the grant to 20 percent. And it's nothing, it's nothing mandatory about it, if you, you know, if you get funded, or if you don't get funded, certainly, and we've done these for five years' duration, and we true these applications up. If you don't get funded, you clean it up, you go again.
Mr. Clemmons?
As far as cost to the actual town, what you pointed out earlier, we could substitute our, our part with in-house labor, is that correct?
That's correct. Now, that was the worst-case scenario, if you didn't do anything. And we certainly encourage you to do, we're going to absolutely have to have you in the original location of this stuff, so you're going to be able to write that off as part of your match.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, you know, reviewing this whole thing, and listening to you conceptually, obviously, and from a technological perspective, I mean, it would take us from dark ages to the light ages, you know, all in, all in one swoop. The idea of being able to find out where all these meters are and everything else in the event of a storm, I hate to use the H-word, but in the event of a storm, to me, is certainly, you know, a godsend, if we could do that.
It will be tied into your radio read, order, you know, your order system, get your radio read to the neighbors.
Yeah. As you heard, I love the idea that Chris on lift station number four, if we have a problem with it, he gets on his telephone, and he can determine exactly what the issue is before he gets there, so he can start resolving it. Thanks for bringing this up. Thanks for bringing this up.
Any more questions? Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for all the, the other things that you do as well.
Thank you.
The, the board would need to adopt the resolution before we can, I'm sorry.
Thanks, sir. I need all the help.
I move, I move we adopt resolution nineteen oh four, resolution of the government body of the applicant.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pro say no. unanimous, Madam Clerk?
So before I get started, I'll talk about it in the room. Everyone wants to know what happened to my hands. And I, I honestly wish I had a cool story about saving kittens during a hurricane or something like that. The simple fact is, I was working on my truck, the hood slammed down, broke a bone right on top of my hand, so. I wish I had a better story, but I don't. As far as the August police report goes, um, it's in the back of the room, I'm sure everyone has looked at it. Numbers are pretty average for, for our August, um, for, for our average for what we're doing now, obviously being a bit more proactive in our police work. The Labor Day weekend in August, um, the state does a Boozer or Lose It campaign, which we participated in this year, and conducted a traffic checking station, and off of that we issued five ta, uh, five state, uh, excuse me, five state citations, and one driving law license revoked, uh, arrest off of that. In total, for the month of August, we issued sixteen state citations, fifty-five ordinance citations, three of which were for animals, uh, being off the leash. So this is a friendly reminder, even if you're walking your dog, he's gotta be on a leash. And then only other thing I wanted to mention as of right now was that we hired a new officer, Officer Roman, came to us from, uh, Onslow County Sheriff's Office, which is up in the Jacksonville area, and this was from Chief Lane's retirement. When we were finally getting that position filled, we obviously go through a long process, backgrounds and everything else to, to hire and fill a police officer's position. So, that was that part. That's August. I feel like there's a lot of tension in the room for Hurricane Dorian in September, so if the commissioners wish, I will speak a little bit about that and the process that we went through. If you'd rather me wait until the September report, I can do that. It is, it is completely up to the-
Go ahead.
I, I figured. Okay. The police department seemed to have gotten a lot of heat over Hurricane Dorian in the evacuation process. So I'm gonna try to explain this to you as best I can. If a mandatory evacuation is ordered, and it says, we're gonna, we're gonna quote this one, eight AM, that does not mean start packing your bags at eight AM. We don't know if it's gonna take you two hours to get off the beach, or you six hours to get off the beach. If it says effective at eight AM, that means at eight oh one, you're in violation of the evacuation order. Everyone knows that there was hurricanes coming for days, I think Dorian was about ten days, and we kinda saw this track coming this way. So I, I hate to say it, but no one should've been surprised by this storm, and as we went door to door and tried to evacuate, so many people were just blown away that there was a hurricane coming. And, yes.
So it didn't say effective, it said beginning at eight AM?
Right.
Which I know it wasn't from us, I know it was a cut and paste from the case.
And it, and it was, that, that is correct. This one, this one came from the state, and it, it, it said beginning effective.
No, it didn't say effective. It said beginning at eight AM.
Correct.
So that was very confusing, and I know, you know, again, it wasn't us.
Right.
And, so, I left, uh, I know some people left at eight, I know some people left at ten, I left a little bit after that, I won't tell you when. But, they, they, I was told that it was inconsistent as far as blocking, if, if you're gonna say eight AM, people were getting back on after ten.
Right.
So that's a little bit-
It, that is extremely-
Confusing.
Yeah, that is extremely inconsistent, and, and at eight AM, no one should've been let back on the beach. I, I agree with that a hundred percent. Because of what we were dealing with, and it was thrown on us last minute as well, just like the homeowners and everything else, it honestly took us past eight AM to get our force and everything ready, and I wanna say, I, I can't, somewhere around ten, ten-thirty before we finally got-
So you were beginning at eight AM as well, so that's, I feel better than I did.
And, and we were, we, we were playing catch-up too. So, i- in the future, if it says, and hopefully, we'll have more organization, and the governor won't come down and, and throw this on us, and take it from the town officials, but-
Well, I know other towns took liberty, and, and they said, you don't have to be off until five, I think Ocean Isle was, or something like that.
Yes.
But I don't fault, I mean, that was, uh, very confusing from the government, that's all.
And I, I honestly, I can't speak for other towns, I don't know how they do that or how they get away with it, because if someone gets hurt like that after that eight AM timeframe came up, I, in my opinion, that, that town, that whoever failed to follow the governor's orders, they're gonna be on a lot of liability. But that's, again, that's above, above where I'm at. We were, we were busy getting, getting our resources together, so we did, we were a little after eight before we got set up, so.
Okay.
That is, that's the reason for that. But that is, that's how it works in the future. If, if it comes out and it says beginning at eight, or effective at eight, or, or whatever the timeframe may be, it, it doesn't mean start packing your bags then. You, you really had ten days, or, or however long, to start getting your stuff together. It's hurricane season, unfortunately, we live on a barrier island. This time of year, we should really kinda be set and ready to go. I still have not unpacked my house from the hurricane. My wife gets on me, I still don't have the front porch chairs and everything back out there, because at any time, I'm liable to get called back in for it too, so. And trust me, we feel your pain. I, I hate to run homeowners off of here, I, I honestly do, but the same thing, y'all have to leave your home, Frank and I, all of our officers, none of us went home for three days either. So we were here the day before doing evacuations, none of us went home, we were here during the storm, and then we were here afterwards getting everybody back on. So we, we honestly do feel your pain. I'm not saying it for the sympathy card, but when we're running you out of your homes, trust me, all of our officers evacuated their homes as well, so. That's my hurricane spiel. If you have questions, comments, or concerns, I'll be glad to try to add, or answer them. I, I know that was September, but that was... All right. Any questions, comments, or concerns about the August? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Hire a mechanic.
He didn't, he didn't.
Yes. Uh, number ten.
As, as a board of commissioners, we've discussed this topic on numerous occasions, both a year ago and in the last couple of months. And to explain why we're discussing it again, I made a, a little statement that said, after due discussion and consideration in April two thousand and eighteen, the board of commissioners voted to revise ordinance section seven-two-point-oh-two parking regulated on public streets and right-of-way. The revised ordinance contains section K. It shall be a violation of this chapter to leave standing any portion of a vehicle in a lawful parking area between the hours of two AM and five AM. The stated purpose for the revision was a concern for the safety, privacy, and property rights of the property owners of Holden Beach. Due to an increase in proactive enforcement measures of the Holden Beach Police Department related to parking in the right-of-way, the benefit of the revision has been questioned by some residents and visitors. In an attempt to address the stated concerns and also protect the stated purpose of the revised ordinance, I suggest the following two course of action. One is that rental agencies include in advertisements the number of legal available parking spaces for rental properties. This will give potential renters an opportunity to determine if a rental home has sufficient parking for their needs. And number two is allow Holden Beach property owners displaying a valid Holden Beach vehicle decal to park in the right-of-way adjacent to their property, as long as such parking is not otherwise prohibited. For example, no parking on Ocean Boulevard West or within twenty-five feet of an intersection. This limited exception, coupled with other ordinance provisions, should address the vast majority of complaints without expanding the potential for overcrowding and the conversion of smaller rental properties into event properties. So, to put it simply, there's been an increase in summonses for people parking in the right-of-way. Some of the discussion that we've had is, what about, what if I have my family come down for the day? What if this happens, what if that happens? Seems to me that if people know they're going to need ten parking spaces, they should rent a home that has ten parking spaces. If you're only gonna need a number of parking spaces once or twice during your stay, this will let you have up to four extra parking spaces. And I think that it's kind of a logical, it's a reasonable compromise to both protect the interest. What we discussed so much last year was, we wanna protect the privacy and the property rights of the people, more or less will live on East End, so people aren't parking in their right-of-way overnight, listening to music, whatever it is. So this will, I think, accomplish that goal, it will keep people out of the right-of-way, and it'll also allow people to use their right-of-way with four more vehicles. I think that should, that should actually take care of the vast majority of instances where people need more parking venues available. And Tim brought up a good point last meeting when we were discussing this. We don't want to expand. One, one of the things we try to do here, one of the things that we've been elected to do, is to keep Holden Beach more or less the way it's been, and we wanna keep it that way in the future. So we don't want to make it too easy for people to rent a house and then be able to park wherever the heck they want to, and in, in that way, you rent a house where eight people should be, and now you have twenty-eight people there, because you can park your cars wherever you want. So this kind of meshes with that, that type of result and, and aspiration for us to keep Holden Beach the way it is today. Anything to say, Commissioner Butler?
No, I think you've done a great, great job in doing that. You know, the one, the one, another question that somebody had asked me, well, you know, I have my, my kids coming in, and, and there's no place to park. Well, with what Mike is proposing and suggesting here is that then the property owner that has the decals in their windshield, they could take their cars and put them in the right-of-way, and they wouldn't be impacted by it, and their, their kids then, or whosever with them, right, living with them that evening or whatever, will be able to park.
The ordinance will need to be very carefully ordered, because there are some restrictions on residency-based distinctions. The purpose of the ordinance is not to, to wait, we're gonna have to make sure there's a rational basis between the fix and the objective of the ordinance. And the right-of-way is primitive because of a variety of reasons. Here you are trying to make a distinction between parking the right-of-way and between property owners and non-property owners, and so it will need to be reported in very careful manners that it's not challenged.
Okay, good. But we can do it.
It can always be challenged, but-
Right, but, but I'm sorry.
We certainly hope our warning is, accomplishes your role.
Okay.
I would like to just raise the point, and I don't know if it needs to be raised, but right now we provide four free decals, and you can purchase additional ones. Isn't that correct, Margaret? You can purchase additional decals. We don't, we don't have a limit on how many you can purchase additional decal, till, I mean, till we run out, so, um-
I think that may be the, that, that, this would be an example to your question last month, whether or not you have to post this, you may need to make a distinction that parking by permit only, but the likelihood that a person that's coming here for a week is going to purchase a parking or a Holden Beach property decal on the fly when they get a ticket is unlikely.
And the, but the discriminator that we do use is that it has to be purchased by the property owner.
Understood.
Yeah, yeah. It's, yeah, property owner. Anyway, just wondered, Greg, is that something I gotta deal with?
So, I, I would make a motion that we revise the ordinance so that it's legally enforceable and that it allows for parking in the right-of-way if you, on your own property, if you display the Holden Beach issued decal.
A second motion?
Was, was that submitted to the attorney's review and approval?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, everybody understand the motion?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pro say no. And I'm assuming, Madam Attorney, that would be brought back possibly the next board meeting? All right, thank you, and we'll move on to Mr. Clemens, number eleven.
The town is currently a member of the Brunswick County Multi-Jurisdictional Disaster Debris Planning and Support Management Agreement. Currently, the contract is with Lampall Strategies. Beginning in September the twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, the county's new contract will take effect with Tetra Tech as a primary contractor, and Thomas Thompson Consultant as a secondary. Um, I don't know if you'll be able to read all the background information or what have you, but I can if you need me to, but I think y'all pretty much aware of it. Last, uh, meeting, you actually agreed to renew and, and participate with the Crowder Gulf, the new contract bid out then, but I can go ahead and read the, the background. Disaster debris planning and support management contract is a prepositioned contract with no funding associated with the contract for the purposes of assisting the county in the event of a disaster such as a hurricane, tornado, or earthquake. Three proposals were received in response to the request for proposals. There are numerous services priced in the bids, and no one company, no one company was the low bidder on all items. The scoring system was used, and Tetra Tech was the low bidder on the cost and received the greatest number of points on its overall bid tabulation. Thompson Consultant tied for the second lowest bid on the cost and received the second greatest number of points on its overall bid tabulation. If the town would like to continue to be a member of the agreement, we would need to execute the paperwork to participate. Brunswick County's bid tabulation is included detailing the scoring criteria. Staff recommends town continue to participate in the Brunswick County Multi-Jurisdictional Disaster Debris Planning and Support Management Contract, and that the town manager, Hewitt, be authorized to execute any paperwork on behalf of the town, subject to final approval of the contracts by the town attorney. You got any questions? I'll, I'll do a best answer.
I, I have one. What triggers us getting the benefit of this? I heard, you know, that, that, you know, last, during the big storm, e- e- everybody was busy off-island, and, you know, a lot of other places were hit a lot harder than us, obviously, and they didn't come to Holden Beach. Is, is there some trigger, or is it a request, or certain amount of damage, or?
We activate it. Right.
Oh, we do?
Yeah, yeah, we activate it, but I mean, because sort of got used in logic, you know, we can't activate it for three limbs, and it's a shame, because, you know, not trying to be smart, you know, but, uh-
No, I just wondering if, if it's, if it's us activate, activating, that's, that's great. I just wondering if they, you know, prevented us from doing that, so we're saying that.
Really don't have any choice other than, than joining us right here, because that's the options that are laid out, and actually, these people right here are the police to make sure that we don't get in trouble when it comes to payment reimbursement and things like that. But I'd also love to point out, I've not heard all the details of it, but I think the whole reason that the county rebid this contract is because Crowder Gulf was, was the old contractor, and they wanted to make some kind of provisions, because people that didn't have as much, uh, damage were wanting to activate contracts, and I think it caused some kind of conflict, sort of like what you're talking about?
Yeah. Okay.
But I would recommend that, that you, that you follow through. It's actually two that we need to have in place if we do have a disaster.
Yep, okay.
Any more questions for Mr. Clemens?
I'm good.
Discussion? Thank you, Mr. Clemens. Hearing no discussion, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we join into the, into the plan.
Second?
Motion made in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pro say no. Madam Clerk, unanimous? Number twelve, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. RSM has billed the town an additional nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars for services to remedy and oversight on their part, my opinion, in the preparation of the follow-up issue. My opinion, in the preparation of the follow-up issues on the internal control report, I've disapproved that payment. The board had established a ceiling of twenty thousand dollars for those services. There's no action needed by the board other than if you wish to pay the bill, that would have to be subject to the board making an appropriation and a formal resolution stating the board's reason for allowing the claim. I had not prepared that for you tonight, and that would have to be deferred until the October meeting.
So if, if I might, if you recall when the Audit Committee recommended RSM do this internal control review, I came to the board as the representative of the Audit Committee, and I promised the board that we would not be charged any more than the twenty thousand dollars that had been bid without, by them, for work that they chose to do beyond that contract. And that was a promise of mine to the board, that I wouldn't, that that wouldn't happen. My understanding is, and as I follow back in my, in my records now, RSM sent us a draft of the final report. The town responded to that draft of that final report. A final report was prepared and brought to us and briefed to us. And only at that point was the RSM asked to do additional work in addition to what was in the contract, to follow up on some job description work. The board approved that, but the RSM didn't suggest how much they were gonna charge. I don't think they knew. It turns out they worked seventeen hours between the manager and the person doing the work. They billed us a third of that, a little less than a thousand dollars. And I understand the position that we'd probably get in a discussion, heated discussion, because we did approve the work, and we might have expected that we would have to pay. My personal view is that we ought to pay it. I don't think it's unfair. I think we asked for work. We got it, we got a great report from them. But before I ask you, because I would, I would obviously want to pay it, but it'll be a board decision. Before I say anything, though, before I ask anybody if they want to make that motion, I had conversations with RSM. I reminded them of the arrangement that we had. They had a twenty thousand dollar maximum, not to exceed. I told them I had promised the board they wouldn't have to pay more. They have withdrawn their invoice. They have agreed they will not charge for that. They will eat the seventeen hours just because of the arrangement, just the misunderstanding and whatever. So I will not make a motion, but I would suggest that the board consider paying them this money in good faith for work that they did. It was good work.
I'm just gonna remind everybody that the additional work was because they issued a report where they said that something didn't exist that actually did exist, and there had been confusion. And because there hadn't been some level of communication at some point or another with the town manager, they issued a report without having confirmed that everything they had asked for that was available was indeed provided. And this had to do with the job descriptions, the compensation scheme and things that they reported in their report that we didn't have it. And of course, we did have it, and we all knew we had it because we'd been given it early in the year at some of the commissioner's requests. So this actually was rather of a snafu on their part. And I just would say that this was a correction of an error. It wasn't additional work. It was fixing something that was an error, which is, to me, two different things. And I was the one who actually made, made it clear that you were saying twenty thousand because I was concerned about it. And you said, again, you, as you said, you promised that twenty thousand would be the limit. I, I personally think the twenty thousand is the amount that they got paid in. It should be no more.
Any more discussion? Is there a motion?
Let's make a clarifying statement.
Yes, ma'am.
If the board was to make a motion like you would have to approve a formal resolution outlining the fact as to why you are paying invoice, that would have to be in the minutes along with the folks that are in favor of it. It'd have to be written into the minute. So tonight, you may direct us to draft a resolution that you won't actually be directing payments until you adopt the resolution. That's pursuant to chapter one fifty-nine.
All right, hearing no motion, we'll move on. Let's see, we're number thirteen?
Yes, sir.
Still you, Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, sir. This is a proposed license agreement with the Holden Beach West Property Owners Association for basically a twenty-foot strip around the perimeter of the property that Lift Station Four is located on. I'd requi, we've been talking to the West End POA of seeking additional access there. I'd request the board's approval of this, subject to the attorney's review and refinement as needed, and coordination of the document with the West End POA. This is very similar to the arrangement that we have with the license access for the pier property.
And at no cost to the town?
No cost.
Any questions, anything?
Nope.
All right, number fourteen?
We would need the board to approve that.
We'd need the board.
Anything else? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion, I'll make the motion to approve the license agreement.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Unanimous, Madam Clerk? Number fourteen, Town Clerk Fennel?
We have two alternate members vacancies on the Board of Adjustment, so I would recommend holding session meeting at six forty-five on October fifteenth to hold the interviews for anybody interested.
Does that meet with the consensus of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed?
Agreed.
Very good. Number fifteen. Mr. Hewitt?
Regarding the, this year's thirty June twenty nineteen year-ending audit, we've got the kickoff has happened. Myself, Mr. Fletcher, Mark Fleschauer, and Jay Sharp, the principal audit partner, held a kickoff meeting on the twenty-seventh of August and have laid out a calendar that will hopefully allow for us hurricanes notwithstanding to have our audit completed on time this year. It's underway, that audit effort is underway in earnest. Rive's personnel were here today. They'll be here today, tomorrow, and also Thursday. And I believe that there's been an audit, a special meeting of the Audit Committee scheduled for Thursday to review that calendar and update the Audit Committee on the progress so far. To that point, I'd like to bring it to light that contrary to some of the various official and social media coverages lately, I want it known that the Local Government Commission's Unit Assistance List dated the twelfth of July and current as of twelve September does not include the town of Holden Beach on that list. You may recall that earlier this spring, the town was placed on the list for a late audit. With that circumstance remedied, the town was not included on this most recent unit assistance list for any of the four reasons that the Local Government Commission contemplates. That being lateness, internal controls, general funds financial issues, which is fund balance and tax collection rates, and also water and sewer fund financial issues. So the town of Holden Beach is not on the unit assistance list. It wasn't on the unit assistance list on the twelfth of July. It wasn't on the unit assistance list as of this afternoon. It may get put on there tomorrow, but it hasn't been on the unit assistance list this summer. The Lockwood Folly?
Mr. Hewitt, may I interrupt you just a minute?
Yes, sir.
The auditors, didn't they get extra money to correct and for extra time because we were on that list?
The board approved the contract with the auditor after the twelfth of July, I believe. When was that? It was the, I believe it was at the regular meeting in July, which would have been after the list was published on the twelfth of July.
But they got more money. My recollection is they got more money because of all the extra work they're gonna have to do to help get us off the list. Did I dream all this?
No. They got the extra money for all the extra work that they did to do the audit. It had nothing to do with, with the list. They retained so that they would be able to work quickly and get us off this list that we supposedly got a notice that we were on. Is that correct?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. That, that retention of them occurred after the list was published, I think is what you're trying to get at.
But whenever I was sitting in this chair, there was a discussion that benefited them financially because, quote, "we were on the list." Now we learn that we were actually never on the list.
But didn't we get a letter that was on the list?
In the spring. We were, we got a letter, we received a notification in the spring that we'd been placed on the list.
If, if I may, my memory, there were two reasons that we retained them at what I would say is a premium rate. One was the consideration that because of all of the findings last year that made them have to do extra auditing, we would be considered a higher-risk audit, which automatically triggers more work. So that was one of the reasons it was gonna cost more. And the second reason, which was not really that much cost-related, but the reason that the majority of the commissioners wanted to retain them was they felt that there was a higher chance of staying on schedule if we used the same auditor, who is now very familiar with last year's books, and that that's what made it worth spending the extra money so that we would not be put on the list again.
But the letter saying we were on the list, who wrote the letter?
No.
No, he didn't.
I'm asking who wrote the letter?
LGC.
That came from the LGC.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify.
In the springtime, yeah, right. Because I got a copy of it. I don't have it with me, but I have it home.
But the fact is, we were not.
The fact is, you were, because they sent you the list and said you were on the list.
We were.
And not anymore, they've taken us off the list.
We, we received notification in the spring that we were on the list.
Right.
We entered into a contract the sixteenth of July with the auditor. The list, we were not on the list on the twelfth of July. I think that's your point.
That is.
For any reason. The general revaluation report, was that enough?
Yes, sir.
The, the general revaluation report that we have, are attempting to achieve funding for a study on, through the supplemental disaster relief, we don't have anything new on that. It's probably gonna be through the end of the month at least, before anything breaks on it. The Lockwood Folly Ben Widener Navigation Project, that Ben Widener was part of the alternate bid for the Lockwood Folly Emmett Crossing Contract, which is a small business set aside. Held the contract bid opening was held the twenty-third of August. Received two bids, one twice the engineer's estimate. The other apparent low bidder is considered to be non-responded by the Wilmington District. Since this project is a small business set aside, it's subject to the federal contracting protocols in addition to needing the, the final biological opinion. So there is another series of processes, contracting processes, that's underway now before we can get an adjudication and a contract award. A decision has to be made from the Small Business Administration, in fact, to disqualify this particular bidder. So more to come later on the Lockwood Folly Ben Widener Project. The Central Reach Project sand source survey data has been completed. We got that done before Dorian hit. And ATM has that data now and is prepping the report. The initial feedback is that we're gonna have to have a few more core borings done based on the hydrographic survey. We're probably gonna be coming back to the board for some additional appropriations, but we have to work that out, work that out, those estimates out first.
David, before you get too far, what about the actual crossing dredging? That's separate, right, from the Ben Widener? Is there any additional?
It's, it's, it's the, that's the same contract. It's, the Ben Widener is part, is the module that's on the base contract. And since they were all bid at the same time, that, that whole project was bid with the Ben Widener basically being a module, but...
Okay, so it's linked to the?
It's, it's the same, it's the, it's the same to, same to firms.
Thanks.
FEMA, as I briefed last month, we currently have four federal declarations that we're working simultaneously. Florence and Michael both are still in the environmental queue with FEMA. Matthew and Irene, revisions have been submitted. Initial storm damages from Dorian are in the Central Reach area. We've got close to two hundred thousand cubic yards that have been quantified. And island-wide, island-reach-wide, about three hundred and forty thousand cubic yards are roughly estimated at this time. That declaration, federal declaration for Dorian, in Brunswick County specifically, it may work differently for the rest of North Carolina, is pending. And we have a meeting tomorrow with FEMA to aid in the Brunswick County determination. So there will be a board meeting at one o'clock. I'll sit in on that until I have to leave and go to Bolivia. There's really no need for me to sit in. So I will attend the, the roll call. And then I'll, Kristy and I'll go to the FEMA meeting to see just how that plays out for the Brunswick County determination. There's a threshold, a per capita count on damages. And of course, our big number always is sand losses. Hurricane operations, we have conducted a brief post-storm outbrief with the mayor's emergency management director, identified several issues that we need to refine in our emergency plan. I'm not gonna talk about evacuation. We'll leave that to the governor. My opinion is, is those decisions need to be left to the local level for the people that have to deal with the, with the carnage. We did get a taste of what our lift station upgrades can and will do for the town. Not related to that is that what we saw, or I saw, from the public works crews is that best-case scenario, bluebird skies, day after the hurricane goes, not a lot of water down. Best-case scenario on re-energizing the sewer system is six hours. Best case, can't do it any faster than that. That's running up and down the road, nobody on the island getting in your way. It's six hours. Caution to everybody, I know it's dangerous for me to say that. Do not think that we're gonna be able to get the sewer system up every time that a storm goes through here in six hours. That was an anomaly, that we were able to do that. That's a hundred and ten percent... That's a hundred and ten percent military power. It's not gonna happen that way ever again, I don't believe so. Although Chris would probably say, yeah, it will. We had, we had, we had minimal flooding, we had, we did not need our generator sets. We put water down, power goes out, you know, we kept power the whole time. We had many of the systemic issues we saw during Florence, Florence specifically, we did not see those shut off of potable water. The threat of potable water being shut off did not affect us because people had evacuated. But water was turned back somewhat. So if you remember during Florence, we actually had a big water line main to Brunswick County that was compromised. And actually, we talk about sewer system affecting the ability to regenerate here on the island, but in that particular case, don't have water to bring it back to. Potable water is kinda hard to rehabilitate here on the island, too. The town hall, as part of our emergency plan that we review on a frequent basis, whenever we see those storms coming up ten, twelve, fourteen days out, we start dusting off those plans. Part of that is to evaluate some of our systems. Suffice it to say that we didn't discover this during the hurricane itself, but the town hall generator set, it's toast. And we're, we're working, we're going to have to work through a probable cost matrix of what it's gonna take to fix that, ranging from, you know, I can semi wildly guess, it's probably a sixty grand fix, plus or minus thirty thousand dollars, depending on how well we want to fix it. Noise and relocation of that generator, it shouldn't have ever been put on the backside of this building, but those are some of the things that we're gonna have to deal with in making that assessment. Right now, we've got a temporary generator set up out there, and we're gonna have it here for a couple of months. Hopefully, we'll be able to get an assessment done in sixty days or so and have a proposed remedy to introduce back for the board's consideration as we near Christmas, is what I'm rationally thinking of. Until then, we just have to step over the cables out there at the back, which is not the best case scenario. One of the things that we actually did in anticipation of the storm, we did some ditching out at the canal dredging spoil site over on Scotch Bonnet. We were concerned that a massive deluge might impact the levee out there, so we went ahead and did some ditching out there, and it appears that that worked. And it's also going to facilitate drying that area out at the same time, keeping the mosquitoes down, too. Suffice it to say, it was, even with all of the advertisement that we've done for getting people's decals, it was, it was a, you know, a bum rush on the bar at two o'clock in Cherry Grove on a Saturday night, is what it looked like up here today before the storm came through. I think we sold, we've exceeded the revenues budgeted for that particular line item, suffice it to say. One of the things that we were able to do shortly after the storm, because it did, it broke fair in the Blue Bird Day, is that Mr. Evans was over here bright and early while Chris, while the cops were controlling the entry point, and Chris was making sure that the sewer system was getting back up and running. Tim and Rhonda performed, we had eight houses on the front, or eight building permits that potentially might have been impacted from, had there been encroachment into their doom. That was something that we went ahead and got checked. I'm glad to say that there was no impact on any of those, on any of those site plans. None of those building permits were affected. And last but not least, the amicus brief for the system development fees that Oak Island has submitted, that's been filed and submitted. That's all I have.
Any questions of Mr. Hewitt? Mayor's comments are gonna be short, brief. First of all, thanks to all of our town employees, police department, maintenance department, staff. Everyone towed the line, did a great job. I feel bad for the police department, have taken some of the bad rap over the unexpected mandatory evacuation, which surprised all of us. We thought we had a pretty good plan of attack and way to handle the storm, and then it all got undermined with the statewide barrier island mandatory evacuation. It put us all, all being all of the islands of the state of North Carolina, barrier islands. It put us all into the same position from the South Carolina line to the Virginia line. Well, even after the storm had already gone by here, bluebird type weather, and we were still under the governor's mandatory stuff. Anyway, no one to belabor that, but I would just simply say that no one in the town of Holden Beach had any part of it. My goodness, my phone has melted a few times for the crap I had to listen to. I thank everybody for sharing their opinion. The situation was bad, but one thing, and Mr. Hewitt, you correct me if I'm wrong, I was upset, and I hate to use the word angry, but I was upset. And we solicited an opinion from the LGC, is that right, Mr. Hewitt?
The league municipalities actually provided us with the school of government's opinion from Normal Houston.
Anyway, we went and got a decision from the powers that be in Raleigh whether or not Holden Beach reacted to the governor's order per the law. With all those people angry and everything, we were the ones that did the right thing. And our neighbors chose not to abide by the governor's orders, that's between them and the governor. But just so you know, we were giving some kudos for doing what we were supposed to have done, even though it angered many people. So with that being said, I want to acknowledge the police department for your little giggles tonight. They watched one gentleman swim from Sierra Estates over to Greensboro Street. Thereupon, they welcomed him with open arms and hauled him away after he swam across the waterway to the island. And so I'm always wondering what his thinking was or what his plans were. But anyway, he got a swimming exercise that day and got hauled to Bolivia. Thanks again to the police department for watching the waterway as well as the streets. One of the big concerns we had in trying to get people back on the island is the low places along the boulevard that could not support vehicular traffic because of the depth of the water and the three hundred block down here. And then especially in Holden Beach West and some other spots. It was interesting, the worst spot on the east end of the beach was not a problem this time. We didn't have to pump it out. I don't understand, maybe there was more rain on the west end than east end, but Lord works in many ways, I don't know. But overall, it was, it was almost like a northeastern, not a hurricane here. So we're very thankful for that. But I want to end with something. I've lived here seventy years and I saw something. Mr. Hewitt and I were checking the west end of the beach. And I remember whenever I was a small child, watching eagles fly occasionally, and they'd most always be real high. But on the west end of Holden Beach, we were going down the strand to check the erosion and the washover, stuff like that. And as we were headed west, about half a mile before we got to the west end, we were between the high tide mark and the waterline, and it was low tide. And David was driving, I was in the shotgun seat. And David says, what kind of bird is that? And I was looking landward, he was looking oceanward. And I turned and looked, and I said, I don't know what that is, it's a big bird. And it's flying, what, twenty feet off the ground, David? Just, we were going about fifteen or twenty miles an hour, and there was that big bird flying along. And we talked, and said, I don't know what that is, it's a big brown bird. And so anyway, finally David said, that's an eagle. And I said, look at the color, it can't be, no, it's a young eagle. And it was just flying right along. So we kinda slowed down, turned around and started heading back, and we turned. I was on, in the shotgun seat, and I looked to the northeast, and there was another eagle, a couple hundred yards high, right there. So I saw two eagles on the west end of Holden Beach that day. I don't ever remember seeing an eagle down near the ground on Holden Beach. And especially, it's been forty, fifty years since I've seen two eagles at the same time. Now, there's a pair of eagles in Boones Neck, and there's a pair of eagles over on the Lockwood Folly River. And, but to see that that morning was a blessing. Anyway, that's, that's my wildlife story. John?
Yeah, I, again, feel it personally, cause I've been through things like that. But the staff, the hours they spend, the work they put in, the skill level they've gotta have to be able to get that system back up so quickly, and the work of the police, the hours they put in, is really impressive. We really benefit from it, just wanna recognize it, the staff, and especially all the service guys, and people had their feet on the ground. Well done.
Mike?
I'll just echo what John said. I don't think we can ever do anything to make everybody happy, but I think we try, I think you try. And I think on a whole, everybody, the town workers did an excellent job getting the town back up and running. And I'd like to thank everybody for showing up tonight, and I hope we continue to have good turnouts as we had this afternoon. There are a lot of issues and topics that are coming up that are gonna affect the town for a good period of time. Next week, we're gonna talk about the inlet plan, and the more people that are here to hear what's going on, the better. Thank you for being here.
Pat?
I'm really impressed, not just by how the staff operated post-hurricane, but then, I don't know how you guys got all caught up after basically being out of the office, doing, you know, not doing the regular stuff, which is getting pretty heavy. It's really impressive that we seem to all be caught up at the same time, so kudos. I have one thing I'd like to thank the mayor for. For, it was said at a, at a special meeting recently, but there weren't very many people here. Holden Beach has made an acquisition of property, and I'd like to thank the mayor for acting as the real estate agent for the town, on behalf of the town, at no charge to the town for saving that commission. Did a great job with negotiating and saved us money that way as well, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Joe?
I'd like to also thank the staff for a great job and their continued efforts. I mean, it's really, really truly impressive, and the police department as well. I always enjoy coming back across the bridge and smiling at the police officers. And also, folks, thank you for coming this evening, I greatly appreciate it. And continue to come out and support us.
Peter?
Yeah, I'd like to, again, thank the entire staff. I know it was a lot of work and it's tough to get back to the regular grind. I'd also like to make a comment about additional, you know, the Oak Island System Development Fees, amicus brief, that was, it was, you know, a no-brainer to do, but it affected, we were recommended to delay any other activity we had against our development fees. So we will, now we have, with that behind us, we can now look at our development fees as we promised to do as a board.
Okay. I believe now we're gonna have public comments on general items.
I think we might wanna clarify that last statement. Counselor?
One, that case, I mean, we've submitted the brief, but that case won't be heard by the Supreme Court until sometime in twenty twenty. So we filed a brief in support, just like the Leaven, the municipality's debt, in support of Oak Island's position, but the court has not decided anything yet. So that has to do with Oak Island's charging of the same or different amounts to undevelop and develop.
So we still have, still recommending to wait until that's adjudicated, correct? Is that what you're saying?
I think I would prefer to give the board advice in close session with our attorney-client on that question.
All right, anybody want to speak to any subject that may come to your mind? All right, we're gonna move along to number nineteen. And, Ms. Pat?
I move that we go to executive session to, for North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, re eighteen dot eleven A six, to discuss a personnel matter.
Will you add attorney-client?
Pardon?
I'll say it, for attorney-client. Will you add that?
Oh, okay, as well as attorney-client discussion.
Does your motion come out of executive session?
Second.
All right. I'd like to get back to direction.
Second.
All right.
I would like to make a motion that based on this performance appraisal for two thousand and eighteen, that David Hewitt, town manager, finance officer, finance director, be given a two percent increase. Retro to his, sorry, retro to his higher date. An adversary. An adversary. An adversary. And adversary.
You got that matter first?
Yes, sir.
Is that second? Motion is second, all in favor, any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If I can say nay, does your motion win, Charlie?
Second.
Thanks, Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.